Good evening. Welcome to the June 3, 2025 Regular School Committee Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. Right now, we are going to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing wage contract negotiation with union personnel, Foxborough Educational Secretaries Association, and Foxborough Food Service. The committee will return to public session directly after. We're going to enter into executive session. I just need a motion, please.
Make a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing wage and contract negotiations with union personnel.
I second. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, we're going to have to do a roll call vote, and we will start at the end. Chelsea McHugh, aye.
Michelle, aye.
Sarah Ladani, aye.
Nathan Erman, aye.
Pat Maguire, aye.
Thank you very much. That would be unanimous, and we are going to now enter into executive session. Thank you. Okay, good evening, and welcome, everyone. I will entertain a motion to return back to open meeting.
I make a motion to return to open session.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, we do need a roll call vote.
Chelsea McHugh, aye.
Michelle, aye.
Sarah, aye.
Nathan, aye.
Pat, aye.
Perfect. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. Just to reiterate, this meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. All right, we're going to go to our first item on the agenda. We're going to, we just, we're in executive session for the purpose of discussing wage contract negotiations with union personnel for the Foxborough Educational Secretaries Association and Foxborough Food Services. So Dr. Berto, so just give everyone a quick summary of kind of what's been going there.
Sure. So the Foxborough Educational Secretaries Association, I'll start with that one, would first like to thank Tiffany and Meridian and Christine for representing their association. We had a great number of meetings, and the contract that you have, proposal before you, is one that is a two and a half percent increase each year. It is dropping a step, adding a step. There was a clause in the current contract that was you couldn't hire anyone above Step Seven. It's omitting that to where it opens that up and not really putting us in a position to where, we did lose some candidates in the past by not being able to go above Step Seven, and it was a slight increase in longevity, and it's a three-year contract.
Fantastic. Great.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the contract. I make a motion to approve the contract for the Foxborough Educational Secretaries Association.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Any further questions, comments, or discussion? And this is a three-year contract. This is for FY '26 through '28. All in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your efforts on this.
And again, thank you to the Secretaries Association and some really productive dialogue that took place. The next one is Foxborough Food Service, and that again is a three-year contract and a, again, both, you know, fair contracts going forward and a collaborative, productive process with them, so to thank Stacy and Christine and Jane for their work in representing their group. It is a two percent, two and a half percent, excuse me, over the three years, and then an FY '26 adding and dropping a step. There was a slight increase in their clothing allowance as they provide clothing. For the most part, we do some other things such as the aprons and some of that kind of stuff, but they do have a clothing allowance and then a slight increase in bereavement leave. So again, that's a three-year for FY '26 to FY '28, and thank them for their work.
Fantastic.
Yeah, we're really fortunate to be able to have our own food service.
Yeah.
A lot of districts don't.
And they're fantastic, too.
Yes, they are. They absolutely, and we get to see it on like professional development days and everything else. They're fantastic, all of them.
They did a wonderful job at the senior barbecue at the high school last Friday. I did get to taste a little, a little bit of the lantern, and it was fantastic, so we are super lucky. All right, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the proposed FY '26, FY '28 contract for Foxborough Food Service.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? All right, all in favor? Perfect. My mind's on roll call. Sorry. Yes, and that would be unanimous, five zero zero. Again, thank you to everyone. Thank you to Foxborough Food Service, Dr. Berto, everyone involved. That's great. Okay, being on, we're going to go to open public comment, and I see we have one on the sign up here. Open public comment?
Hi, my name is Christopher Sekala. I live at 30 Shoreline Drive in Foxborough. Here's a copy of my note for you, and I'm going to speak tonight. So what is written in the school board, public board, participation at school committee meetings did not happen last time. I had less than five minutes due to repeated interruptions. My notice of appeal, well, first let me give you your own rules. So you can redo that if you'd like. I'm appealing the order I received by email from Sarah. This is the email that I received, this is from Sarah, if nobody saw it. Then the, so core regulations are not legally sound. You must have misinterpreted what council said to you because what you determined is wrong. Here's your core regulation. Now, the reason is, again, you have to go back to MGL 71, Section 38R. The opening line is, "You shall obtain criminal offender registry information, but in a manner prescribed by the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education." And that's what you're not doing. You missed that from your, from your regulations. That's why the superintendent is directing the school system to violate MGL Chapter 214, Section 1B, right to privacy. She has no choice. And Section 1B says, "A person shall have a right against unreasonable, substantial, or serious interference with his privacy, the Superior Court should have jurisdiction inequity to enforce such right and in connection therewith to award damages." You are collecting, and this is your own core handout, names, maiden names, dates of birth, place of birth, six of the nine digits of social security numbers, gender, eye color, race, height, weight, driver's license numbers, mother's maiden name, current and former addresses. This is unreasonable. You don't need a driver's license, social security number, or any of that information to volunteer to school that does not involve regular, direct, and unmonitored contact with children. Here's an email I received about the upcoming eighth grade dance. This is just from a woman named Karen. She, she's taking directions, but you can see on the paragraph under core checks, it says, "I know that we don't have direct interaction with students, but, but as we'll be in the building, we need to make sure that we are following the rules." That's not part of the, of the statute, just being in the building. So it's, it's your way out of line, and you're collecting too many. So, so, but we have to fill out our core forms because we want to see the kids. So what you're doing is you're, you're ransoming the children. It's just, it's plain old ransom. So by not following the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education advisor, you're blindly following MGL Chapter 6, 172, to screen volunteers. That's the problem with what you're doing right now. Now, on that one, you don't have any standards for screening that the core advisory provides because you're ignoring it, which results in arbitrary and capricious rulings. You're only allowed, and I quote, "A school committee or superintendent may obtain from the department data permitted under Section 38R of Chapter 71." That's the law, okay? Paragraph D, except as authorized by the section, it shall be unlawful to request or require a person to provide a copy of his criminal offender record information. Violation of this subsection, which is what you're doing, is punishable by the penalty set forth in Section 178. This is 178, so you're looking at a year in jail and a $5,000 fine. For example, I was allowed to attend the musical as a guest. That's consistent with the core advisory. I was not allowed to help out with the building, the set. That's not consistent with the core advisory. I was allowed to attend the Ahern Heart Show. That's consistent with the core advisory. I'm currently not being allowed to attend the eighth grade dance as a chaperone. This is an email I received from the superintendent's agent. I don't want to get, I said, yeah, I can't go because of my, because of my core record. So that's not consistent with the core advisory, where they explicitly state about a school dance, and I quote, "Similarly, a school may determine that a parent chaperone in a school dance is never permitted to have direct and unmonitored access to students due to the nature of the volunteer position. In these examples, school officials in consultative with the legal council may determine that a statutory standard does not apply and that they do not need to obtain core about these types of volunteers." But anyway, you do it, it's wrong, and it's illegal. So about the superintendent, using her agent, she's not allowing me to chaperone at the school dance, and this is the sign up, which, what they're showing, what they're telling everybody is, anyone chaperoning must have a core file on record. You're not sure if you have a core on file, you can call, so you can't even, they're telling you right up front that you have to get this core record. You're telling everybody, but right, if you actually review the advisory on core law, let me give a copy of that, it specifically states that being a chaperone at a dance is not in that group of people. It's just not. They say that explicitly, thank goodness. So they're not, so at this dance, there's going to be 17 other chaperones in the room.
You have 15 seconds.
13 seconds, sorry. In the size of the cafeteria, there's going to be armed, two police officers with weapons. I called them and checked, they actually bring weapons to the dance. There's going to be two at least school employees. I have, I believe they're custodians, and among other school employees will be there.
Okay, I'm going to stop you right there. We're at five minutes. Thank you very much. Any other notes you have, you can submit. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move to the next item on the agenda as we see nobody else signed up for open public comment. All right, so we're going to move on to approval of minutes. Got a set of minutes here for our regular meeting on March 25, 2025.
And make a motion to approve the March 25, 2025 Regular School Committee Meeting Minutes as presented.
Second. Any further questions, comments, or discussion? All right, all in favor? And that would be five zero zero. Thank you very much. We have another policy subcommittee.
I make a.
From May 12.
I make a motion to, to approve the policy subcommittee meeting minutes from May 12, 2025.
Second. Any further questions, comments, or discussion? All right, all in favor? And that would be five zero zero. Thank you very much. And now we have May 20 for Policy Subcommittee.
I make a motion to approve the policy subcommittee, subcommittee meeting minutes from May 20, 2025.
Second. Any further questions, comments, or discussion? All in favor? And that would be five zero zero. Thank you very much. And we are on to our next item on the agenda, the teaching and learning highlights, the Foxborough Street painting. So we're going to have Ms. Kasha come up, and we're going to have all the students come up with her. Thank you. Thank you for being here. You guys can share.
Joe, can you help them pull the chair up?
They're little. They're cute. Are you guys okay?
Yeah.
They make, they make that big chair look small now.
Great job.
Thank you. So sorry, we have a big group with us today. This is incredibly exciting. Thank you so much for having us. As a K through 12 department, being able to show our literal elementary, middle school, and high school artists on this is pretty phenomenal, so thank you so much. So I will let the artists introduce themselves when we get to the slides. I'm going to give you a little bit of a background on the Foxborough Street Painting Festival. So again, my name is Kelly Arcacha. I'm the art department head. The Foxborough Street Painting Festival happened because of an event we went to in 2013. So in 2013, we didn't have National Art Honor Society at that time. We had just an art club, and we were looking for a way to bring all our students together. Unlike some of the other departments, like music, a lot of times when we have art students, they're in their studio spaces, so they might collaborate in the classroom together, but when you go on exhibits, it's like their work is there and people kind of walk around, so it's, it's not the same. So we're looking for a big event that we could bring everybody together. One of our teachers, Sherry Polisino, had been to the Providence Street Painting Festival at the time, which happened at that skating rink, and we thought it was a great idea, so we brought a bunch of students with us. It's funny, when you look in that picture, all of those students have graduated and now have careers, which is amazing. One of them is actually an art teacher. But we brought them. It was amazing. It was amazing seeing students from different grades, just carpooling, like freshmen carpooling with seniors, and them collaborating on this big, like six foot by six foot square together. So seeing all the artists working together in this one square, it just, it was amazing. And then, not just that, they are working next to, on either side of them, they have artists from Providence or other towns who are working next to them. You have people who are walking by and giving them compliments on their work, which is completely different, again, from being in a gallery showing your work kind of situation. So we just left there on such a good note, feeling great, and everybody decided, no, we definitely need to keep doing this. So 2014 comes around, we're like, all right, we're going to sign up for this again, and it's canceled. Providence is canceled. So the art teachers, we all got together and were like, you know, Foxborough is a pretty phenomenal community. I wonder if we can set one up here. And a bunch of things happened at the same time, which, which made this happen. We started National Art Honor Society around that time, so we had a bunch of students who could help out with this. Senior project happened at that time, which I can have the two girls talk to you about senior project. And I got a call, surprisingly, from the superintendent at the time, Superintendent Debbie Spinelli, and she said that, hey, Foxborough Dental has called me, and they really want to support a community art event. So we came up with a proposal, proposed it in Debbie Spinelli's office with Foxborough Dental there. We also had a representative there, Diane Griffin from Patriot Place. She's the head of marketing at Patriot Place. And they all came together and said, yep, we're going to make this happen. So it's, ever since then, it's, they've been in partnership with us. So Patriot Place hosts the event. Foxborough Dental gives us funding every year to pay for the trophies and the pastels and the awards for the event. And every time I emailed them in May, they're like, absolutely, we want to do this again. So it's, it's phenomenal. So 2015 is when we held our first one at Patriot Place. The two students that you see in there, Lindsay Coniff, who are very familiar with, with our summer leadership retreat, and Brianna Boger, were the very first senior project students who ran the event. So they had to come up with, with everything for the event and how it, how it worked, which we're very thankful that we have that roadmap now. And then, all the art teachers got together, we said we need to brand this, so we came up with a logo, we worked with the senior ink team. The branding was done by Amber Dophney, who's also graduated and, graduated from RISD and now has a career as a full-time artist. But that all took place 2015. In 2020, we had to stop the event, so we had been doing it every year since then, we had to stop it because of COVID restrictions. But what was wonderful that happened in 2020 is the art teachers put out a call to families and said, you know, we still want this, like, the, just the emotion of this to take place or, or what's happening, and we put out for, if families want to do it on their driveways, they can. So we put out a theme, and we got a bunch of pictures from families doing it on their driveways at home that we got to post to the site. So come to this year, 2025, we have these two wonderful people right here who are going to be talking about senior project, and Yasmin, who you know, who is part of our NAHS representative, but they took hold of the 2025 as senior project. They ran the event, and not only did they run it, they broke records on it. We had over 70 artists who were registered for the event, which is way more than past years, over 20 more than past years, and 15 neighboring towns, which I'll read out super quick. Foxborough, Franklin, Walpole, Norton, Andover, Millis, Plimpton, Plymouth, Norwood, Bridgewater, Milford, Stanford, and then from Rhode Island, Johnston, Warwick, and Smithfield. So this isn't just a Foxborough event. It's a lot of towns coming together and artists.
Out of state, too.
Yes, out of state.
Fantastic.
So I will turn it over to Adriana Peterson and Sid Jacobson, who are our senior project reps, who ran everything behind the scenes. We could not have this happen without them. And then Yasmin is representing our National Art Honor Society volunteers.
Yeah, so I'm Adriana. Luckily for us, we had eight previous years before us that set everything in stone, but one of the reasons we reached 70 people, Day of the Event and everything, was because we decided to change things and have a form sign up, and that, because before that, we had been doing checks and all that stuff, and it was a hassle for people to pay Day of and send in all their checks and have the money. So the forms made a big difference, and that's one of the reasons we had so many people.
Yeah, this year was incredible. It was great seeing all the kids and all the work they did. Day of, it was kind of touch and go because we were scared it was going to rain, but ended up being a great day, and we worked really hard for six weeks to see that outcome, and it went really well.
Yeah, so like she said, like Ms. Arcacha said, Foxborough Dental Associates pays for the awards, they pay for all, all the funding, they're our sponsor. However, NAHS money really helps because that's what we use, we have bags with all the supplies for all the artists. We use NAHS funding to get that, so we really couldn't do that without the club, and we're very grateful for the school for that.
Yeah, and also, a lot of the funds we get Day of from selling tickets for voting for favorite squares also goes towards a school-wide art scholarship, which is also really good just for the art students in the school.
Yeah, so our six weeks were spent, I mean, the first one was slow, but we had to get 70 bags together, full of supplies, which we were not expecting. Changing posters, getting volunteers, we had amazing set of volunteers from NAHS. They were all artists willing to spend, some of them spent 12 hours with us that day. So, I mean, they were all hardworking for 12 hours straight. I mean, I have no complaints for them. They were amazing. You can see here, one of our members, Cara, she helped to give trophies out, which we never said you had to do. She just did that, so we had really great volunteers.
Do you want to talk about volunteer?
So how volunteer, volunteering for this event worked? Like, there was a document where people could volunteer, and then they ended up sending, like, text messages to everyone to, like, make sure they know their times and stuff. And then when we got in the event, like, as early as, as early as eight, we started, like, putting up the tables, art supplies, all that stuff, and like, everyone is so willing to do so, like, people were just, like, doing things without even being told to. It was, the volunteers are, like, not just there for volunteer hours, they're also there because they like the event, they love helping out, seeing all the families together, and it was just really like a fun event for volunteers and families.
Do you guys want to talk about your theme?
Yeah, so the way we picked the theme, we look at all the previous years, everything they did, make sure it's not something too similar. So we made a big forms to give at an NAHS meeting of all of our options that we collaborated on first day in the office. Fantasy won by, like, almost all the votes. So here's some of the winners. They were phenomenal. They were really good, but, you know.
Yeah, a lot of things can fall under fantasy, so that's why we felt it would be a great theme to have, especially for little kids, because they can just, which is our main audience, because they can just let their imaginations run wild, because fantasy can sort of be anything.
Do you guys want to talk about the different categories?
Yeah, so you'll see in slides coming up, the categories that you could win in and register under were grades K through four, five through eight, nine through 12, and then adults and family. And, yeah.
So we are lucky because we have artists from each of them other than the adults. We tried to get one of our alumni to come back, but they're busy, who are going to speak. So we'll start with our K through four artists. So would you ladies like to introduce yourselves and talk about?
Tell us your names in the microphone.
Ella. Audrey.
Do you want to pull it closer?
Yeah. Nice and close, so they can, everyone can hear you.
Ella. Audrey.
Hello, Ella and Audrey. Tell us about your, your artwork.
We wanted to do our pets, but they're not magic, so we made them flying.
Oh, I love that.
Yes. That's very creative. Fantastic. So there you go. Definitely fantasy. That's awesome. Did you guys enjoy the day?
Yeah.
Yeah? What was your favorite part?
Probably making the painting.
Making the painting? You liked that the best?
Yeah.
Oh, that's awesome. Oh, is that, is that you guys?
Yeah.
Did you guys win an award?
Yeah.
Oh, you won with your flying pets, too? You left that part out. Well, congratulations. That's exciting. That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Wow, that's really awesome. Do we have any other artists here today?
So we're going to bring the middle school ones up?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, girls.
So we have two artists from the Ahern who are going to speak about middle school. So do you guys like to talk about your experience and what you drew and how you came up with your ideas?
Tell us your names and, and talk to us.
I am Kit Butler. What I drew was an angel, and it was a pretty good experience. There was a lot of people coming by and complimenting the artists as they were working, a lot of artists stopping by and complimenting other people's work. It was a really good environment.
That's great.
My name's Arna Batel, and.
Talk in the microphone so we can hear you.
My name's Arna Batel, and I did this with my friend, Lexi. We both painted, like, a fairy lying next to the pond. It was really fun going to see the other artists and, like, complimenting their pieces along with others complimenting ours, and it was just a really good experience and all.
Is that, oh, that's.
That's Kit.
Yours, that's amazing.
Yep, so Kit's is right in the middle, next to their picture.
That's amazing. And did you win awards?
I won second, I won second place for my age category.
Congratulations.
And middle school and elementary school were tough because they had about 18 different artists that they were competing against.
Wow.
Each category, yeah.
How many artists total were competing?
Over 70.
Oh, that's right. Okay, I'm sorry, forget.
No worries.
Wow, that's amazing. That's so impressive.
Before Arna and Kit sit down, I just want to recognize, Arna, Central Office holds an exhibit every year where we select K through 12 artwork to go up in the Central Office, and Arna's having her self-portrait in there this upcoming year. Oh, that's awesome.
Congratulations.
Great. And then we're going to move on to the high school artists. So you guys want to introduce?
Hello, my name is Aiman Kelly. I've been doing this since I was in, like, the K through four group, and it's just a really great experience. The amount of support you get is amazing. Like, people walk by, they compliment your art, you make conversations with the people next to you, like Landon. I know my entire family comes by, and they make a day out. Everyone really enjoys it. It's just a great opportunity to get to try art that typically you don't do that much. I don't use chalk a lot, but it's a fun experience to really express myself in different ways. Just overall, it's a great time.
That's awesome.
Hello, I am Landon Ribeiro. This is my first year signing up for the Street Painting Festival, and overall, it was a great time, got to meet new persons, new friends. It was, I think the best part about it was people coming around, complimenting your art, asking what you were drawing, what's the significance of it, and it was honestly a great time.
That's great. Congratulations.
Both, both of them are award winners. Landon's is the piece in the middle, and then you say Aiman, and Aiman's is the one on the top, left-hand side.
Wow. Fantastic.
And I, I'm going to embarrass Aiman for a second. So Aiman pretty much is the face of the Foxborough Street Painting Festival because, as he said, he's been doing it since elementary school, so it's amazing to have somebody who's returning, and that's one of our favorite parts, too, is returning artists. And Sid found a picture of, of them doing it in elementary school, too, and now they're running it as, as a senior project.
Full circle moment. You guys have an exciting week coming up, too. Big weekend, right? Culmination of a lot of years of hard work, so this is fantastic that you got this. And I love how you said, Aiman, that it's become a family tradition, so it's not just you, you've kind of created this, this family, you know, event that can happen year after year. It's awesome.[1768.07] year. It's awesome. I hope you come back next year. Good.
And that's one of our favorite things too, is the families. We have family teams that come in all the time. Like, there's a father and a daughter that come every year to do it together, which is pretty awesome. So, I just put this slide up. It has some of our award winners and some of our alumni in there. But it says, can't wait to see everybody in 2027. So, next year, the Patriot Place is hosting FIFA. And because of that, we're going to have to delay a year for doing the Street Painting Festival, unfortunately. So, we've let the artists know that it'll be two years down the road. We do have a website that people can check out and follow our stuff. But we are excited because in the absence of the street painting next year, we're going to be bringing back the high school art shows. We're going to use all our energy and dedication to bring the high school art shows back to the high school.
Great. Fantastic. Thank you guys so much for being here. Anyone have any questions or comments?
No questions. Great job.
Very impressive.
Yes.
I will just add that talking about the gallery that we have in Central Office, it, it's really sad and depressing because all of the artwork needed to be returned to the artist here at the end of the school year. And you walk in and people that have, they like, what happened? So, we can't wait to get the next artist up there because it makes such a huge difference. It's really, it's really depressing when you walk in there and all the art's gone.
Honestly, it's my favorite part of coming into work in the morning, just looking around at the art. And especially when it goes up for the first time, you know, we spend some time in the hallway just checking it out and looking at all of it. It's, it's wonderful. It brightens our day and it brightens the day of all of the visitors that come to Central Office. It's really, really great. We love it.
But it is, it really is a great advertisement too, for the artists that we have from, all the way from kindergarten up through grade 12. It's amazing to look at all of the different types of pieces and the progression. And people do stop and talk about it and are amazed when they see the grade levels of the work that's there. And that's from all of the hard work from our, our art teachers, which are amazing, from elementary all up, and then the artists, obviously. So.
Aiman had a piece in there last year, or this past year.
Well, thank you guys for being here. Thank you for your, your artistic contributions. And, I don't know, I think you're all winners. In my book, your paintings are amazing. Your art was amazing. And thank you so much for sharing it with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us.
And Ms. Arakcha, thank you for all that you do as the department head for K through 12.
Thank you. All the seniors are going to the high school now, right? Senior event suite. All right, now on to a really special presentation for me, a parent volunteer PTO PAC, CPAC, update and recognition. We have our PTOs, our special ed PAC, and our Ahearn PAC representatives here. So, why don't you guys all come on up? And for anyone watching that doesn't know, that was my background, how I came to sit here, just volunteering in the schools. And Michelle Thaxton, I believe she's still a representative of CPAC, and very involved in volunteering. It's something that near and dear and very valued by the school committee and the schools and the families and the students too. Do you guys, do you guys want to pull up chairs? Yeah, pull up chairs. Okay. All right. All right. Well, if you can just introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about your PTO or your PAC and what's been going on and give us your update.
I wrote it down because I'm very-
I love it.
I keep reading straight off the paper. I'm Ashley Clement. I am the co-president of the Burl PTO, here alongside Kate Alpert, who is the treasurer. Okay. We've worked hard this year to support and treat our teachers, enrich our students with field trips and events, and give back to the community. And by, on behalf of myself and Jen Stark, we're really proud of what we've accomplished this year. A few highlights to share with you. Let's start with the numbers. Our treasurers, Kate and Angela, have kept everything very organized and up to date. Our operating budget this year comes in at over $35,000. This doesn't include the production budget, which has its own sub-ledger and fundraising side. And this year came in a little over $8,000. As for fundraising, the bit is of course our biggest fundraising income each year. This year coming in for each of us at a little over $15,000. Burl raised a little over $14,000 through our own fundraising, bringing our total fundraising revenue to just over $29,000. Our two biggest fundraisers that our VPs, Payal and Julie spearheaded, were our Lyman pies and holiday catalog drive held in November, which brought in $3,200, and our raffle calendar, which was held in March, which brought in $4,700. We pride ourselves in teaching our students to give back to the community. In March, we celebrated and honored Mrs. Burl's memory for her 140th birthday, with the students collecting over 180 pounds of food for the Foxborough Food Pantry. I think that deserves applause. In April, we held a walkathon in Danny Nickerson's memory, raising over $2,000 for Camp Sunshine, which is a camp that provides free experiences and support for children with life-threatening diseases. As for the communication with our families, our secretary Megan keeps everyone constantly in the know. She works hard to send out weekly blasts on Sundays, reminder emails when needed, and keeps our Facebook posts very up to date. This year, we also created a new position, which was our media secretary Marion, who created a brand-new, beautiful website that's kept consistently up to date as well. In the beginning of the year, we introduced an initiative called Just One Thing, which is a form that encouraged parents to sign up in smaller ways to get involved, whether an hour of their time teaching a beep class or setting up an event. And we had a great response to it, and it allowed a lot more parents to get involved. We've had a great year building our school community. Our after-school B program held its 45th year this winter. And our staff appreciation week was a big hit this spring. We've had quite a few free family events throughout the year as well, from trunk-or-tree to our family movie nights to our family picnic that was held just last night. And you can also look for us on Saturday for Founder's Day. We're all really proud of what we built this year and look forward to seeing what next year we'll bring for the Burl team.
Thank you very much. And congratulations. And thank you for your service in the library as well. Thank you. Yes. Her volunteering doesn't stop at the schools. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Why don't you go next?
I'll, I'm from the PAC, so I'll look at elementary school. Sorry.
That was me. I'm Meg Nelson. I am representing the Igo PTO. I've been our secretary for the past two years. And so, we did make a slide because it was just easier to have the visual. Also, for me, I'm a visual learner. So, you guys can see, we'll start with the first one. It's okay. Either way. So, we, this is our yearly thing. I did want to highlight some of the new things that we did. We switched up our calendar this year. We were noticing a trend and realizing it was easier to be able to just look at your watch than remember where you put the calendar. So, we updated and went digital this year, following the lead of some of the other schools that had been doing that before us. And let me tell you, when I was like, do we need to be dressed for wellness? What day is it? Oh, it's on my watch. It really was helpful to make that switch. Fall Ball is one of our free holiday events that we love to do. Our holiday shop, where kids get to shop for siblings and family and pets. Our volunteers who run that are absolutely out of this world. Also, new this year was our Peace Love Igo Dance. And Peace Love Igo has been one of our, kind of our key phrases as a school for the past number of years. You'll see our shirts around with the peace, the heart and the fox. And we just had a great time dancing, playing games. We had teacher candy grams where kids and families could purchase candy grams to go to teachers and specialists and aides, because we do love our Igo staff and educators and all of our Foxborough educators. Right now, we've got our team getting ready for tomorrow's family picnic with pizza and games and ice cream and a fun surprise with the foam machine coming. So, it's going to be great. And we also, Founder's Day and Field Day are right around the corner. So, we did, we're going to highlight that in the next slide. Our teacher appreciation initiatives, we really ramped up this year. And then our field trip funding, our after-school enrichment, we do three weeks in the fall and three weeks in the spring, and parents and staff and community members. We've had the library participate. It's just so incredible to get kids free and low-cost after-school activities to really expand their horizons. It's been so exciting. This year, another new thing, we launched our book vending machine. So, at their birthdays, the kids get to come down to the office for their token, and they get to go and they get to pick a book on their birthday. And so, now it's June, and we're doubling up for summer birthdays. And the amazing Mrs. Smith is taking such good care of that alongside of us. And so, we do, across all of our elementary schools, we're part of the I cares reading program, which helps storytelling and learning about different people in our community in different ways of life, in different backgrounds, whether it's health or disability or ethnicity, and so many different ways of getting to know our community and getting to know what it means to care about our neighbors through parents coming in, grandparents even, aunts, uncles coming in to read in their students' classrooms. Once again, our musical production was just such a highlight. Jackie Godbout was so incredible working with our students and all the parents and community members. We actually partnered with the high school this year to help with some of our sets. So, just seeing the way the community rallies around that and seeing that for all three of our schools is just out of this world. Thursday, we have our volunteer appreciation night because we have an army of volunteers who make this happen. So many parents come and pour out their time and their love for our kids, for our community. They build friendships. This is how I've made most of my closest friends now from volunteering and being part of school life. And we're getting ready to send our fourth graders off as well. But our highlight this year as an Igo PTO was enhancing our teacher and staff and educator support. I have been just blown away, the more time I've spent at the school, seeing the way our educators, our educational aides, our specialists, our health staff, our occupational therapists, our psychologists, our counselors, they are the glue that hold our community together. And we really wanted to up our budget, up our efforts, up our volunteer time. And we actually created a position on our board for teacher support coordination specifically. And so, we really tried to take some of the things we've already been doing and do them better, but then also add some things. And so, our helping hands has jumped to bi-weekly instead of monthly. We've added a teacher treat trolley, which on many months, we come around with, whether it was the candy grams from Valentine's Day, make your own trail mix, soda, seltzer, candy, just a bunch of different things to help give our educators a boost because they work so hard and they do so much. A couple of days, instead of doing a trolley, we had some staff room specials. We brought in breakfast sandwiches one morning. And in December, we had a hot chocolate bar. So, Jo, our teacher appreciation coordinator, she was out of this world, just coming up with great creative ideas. At back to school and, I remember it was February, April break, we did back to school, our classroom supply kits, wipes, paper towels, sanitizer, tissues, a little bit of treats for the teachers, all the things you need to keep that classroom rolling. And then this year, we definitely took our teacher appreciation week up a few notches and made sure we had something different and fresh and new every day, culminating and getting parents to cover every classroom so that the teachers could have lunch together.
That's fantastic.
That was, the parents, the room parents just were incredible. So, our volunteers are amazing and we are so grateful for all of the help and all the way they contribute because our kids and our educators deserve it.
You know, you know I'm an Igo mom. And I have to tell you, you really, you struck my heartstrings because when you said some of your closest friends, I'm going to cry. My daughter was in half-day kindergarten when Kelly Grinnell was teaching half-day kindergarten. It was Mr. Stanton's first year as a principal in the district. And the kids are about to graduate on Sunday. And some of my closest friends I met volunteering as a room parent and at the Igo school. It's really, don't blink. It goes by way too fast.
Yeah, the middle school coming is not, I'm not ready.
We didn't have all this when we were in Igo.
I am not ready for middle school, but-
You guys really took it to another, another level. So, now we have, we have PAC. Do we have anyone from Taylor here tonight? Taylor School? No. Okay. Well, Taylor's amazing, so we'll just say. I've heard about the Taylor.
They hosted the BIT this year, so they get a night off. They hosted the BIT this year. It was a lot of work.
Oh, okay. Okay. The BIT.
Okay. Hi there. My name is Tulika Haynesworth. I'm the president of the Ahearn PAC. And it's nice to see all the PTO activities and look back. My daughter is going to the high school next year. So, like, you know, talk about transitions. So, as with the PTO groups, the PAC's mission is really about building a strong school community and about supporting our teachers with enrichment activities for our kids. What that boils down to is primarily fundraising for field trips. So, we, you know, our budget just for field trips alone is roughly $30,000. Costs have continued to go up. It's very challenging. But, but our parents are also have been up to the challenge. So, I'm happy to say that we were able to raise that amount. And just a rough idea, so that's $30,000 for the year. It's about $38 per student that were able to contribute. But it's not just the field trips. We do other small enrichment activities throughout the year, whether it's supporting the science fair or collaborating with other groups and so forth. So, it's, you know, we contribute in lots of different ways. So, in terms of an update for the year, I would say that, I'm going to refer to my notes. So, one of the big things is, you know, with National Junior Honor Society being formed at the Ahearn, we are collaborating more and more with them as a new group as well as with the student council. So, we've been doing more social activities, but with, we've been collaborating the three groups together so that we can bring even more, more things and support each other, you know, whether it's we provide some funding or volunteers or what have you. So, that's been really great. So, it's been a real uptake, uptick in social activities for our kids, especially the fifth and sixth graders. So, don't worry. Fifth grade, it's an easy transition. They may, you know, it works out. So, so that's been wonderful. Along the same lines of, you know, continuous improvement, our carnival this year, we had the highest, yeah, were you there?
I went. I got a basket.
So, so you know that, that it was one of the higher attendance since I've been there and as well as funds being raised. The two women who ran it, I'll get to the volunteers in just a moment, actually. So, let me go on to, similar to the theme that you're hearing from the other schools, our teacher appreciation also took it up a notch. We had a tremendous last year where I think I reported that we had something special for the teachers every day of teacher appreciation week. Well, we not only did that, but we did a bunch of other things. But I would say the, the thing that tugged at my heartstrings the most is somehow we managed to get one of the teachers to work with every single grade and every single student and have them write out on stars and on little pieces of paper what they appreciated about whoever they wanted to talk about, whether it was a staff. We had various kids talk about the custodians and how much they support them. I mean, it was just like, I'm reading these. I was only there for an hour, so I only put up so many stars and so many statements. But the fact that you could get seventh and eighth graders to write about their teachers, I mean, it was pretty amazing. And from what we heard, the teachers walking around on the hallways, because they were pasted like all over the hallways.
I can only imagine.
These statements like, oh, you know, you just don't know on both sides how much you've impacted a student's life. Or for the flip side, teachers, teachers finding out like what they have done for the students. So, it was just like, I'm getting, I'm tearing up. So, that was really quite the topper to our school year. And we have a few more activities going on as well. But like everyone here, you know, it doesn't happen with just one person. It doesn't happen with the PAC board. It happens with the whole army of volunteers. And Chelsea, I would like to call out for leading one of the activities that we did. So, it's people like Chelsea. It's, it's all the committee chairs. It's all the volunteers who come together to make these events successful. And the wonderful thing, I think, about this whole enterprise is where, we all come from different places. So, just on the PAC board, our treasurer grew up in Walpole. So, she moved here, you know, just the next town over. Our secretary grew up in Ohio. So, she moved across, you know, part of the way across the country. I was born in India and I moved halfway across the world. So, we're all coming from all these different places, but we're able to come together and really focus on what's really important, which is making sure that our kids have a good education, have the right opportunities, and go on to do great things.
It's really fantastic. Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you to all of you. And just so you know, four-year Ahearn PAC survivor, nine years, and I, I'm not lying. And then I think it was another five years beyond that at Burl. So, this lady's been, been doing this for a long time too.
I'm the one who started the nonprofit for the Ahearn. My name is like actually signed on the bylaws. A lot of work to get that one going. I'm glad to see that you've done such a great job with it.
It's so nice to see where- It's so nice to see where you guys are all at and how much you value these programs. And I love to hear the end user experience for both the teachers and for the students. It seems like everything you do across the board is impacting the students and the teachers and the faculty, right down to custodians. By the way, you know what? During COVID, they were the single most important group. We counted on them to keep those doors open. And thank you. Thank you to the students and thank you to the PAC and the PTOs for not forgetting them, right? Because they do really important work. But we're going to have our CPAC come up and, and share with us. Thank you to everyone for being here.
As they're getting settled, I'd just like to add appreciations. The, the money that you heard for the field trips, I know you know, it, it's what makes all the difference. And the other part that's exciting, I think, is to hear the difference from our groups where they're learning from each other of what works and being able to leverage that. So that is a huge piece. And that collaboration between the schools, I think, really can't be understated. But when it comes to the enrichment activities, it's, it's amazing of what our kids end up being able to do because of all of the hard work with so many. So thank you.
Yeah, I was, I took the family to the stage production of Lion King Jr. And it was amazing. The costumes, the sets, everything else. My little kindergartner like fell in love with stage. Now I'm taking her to go see other productions elsewhere. Like she, like the elephant and the rhino from Lion King Jr. It's great. It was amazing. And I know you guys support that and they, you know, as hard as they work, they, they need the volunteers to make that stuff happen. So thank you.
For sure. Yeah. Everyone thinks it just happens. It doesn't just happen. It takes a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of manpower.
And the other piece too, I mean, it's so hard from elementary. A lot of times you have parents that their lives change and not being able to go to the middle school and to be able to have that. So to have the support that we have at the middle school and then to see what from teacher appreciation and the high school and so many people that came out and just made it a wonderful, you know, teacher appreciation, educator appreciation. So all the way through. So when you think about the support now and CPAC like.
Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Three superstars.
Well, my name is Holly Mandela. I'm on the CPAC board with Carrie Weston, Jo, I don't know your last name.
Joe Garrity.
Joe Garrity and of course, Michelle Thaxton. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. We appreciate it. We just wanted to go over a little bit about what we've done. For those who don't know, the CPAC is the Special Education Parents Advisory Council. So we support all of our families in Foxborough whose students are on either a 504 or an IEP. And this year, we kicked off the year with a new event, Hay Ride at Wardsbury Farm. We hosted that along with the Mansfield CPAC. We had over 25 kids and families at the event. It was an awesome way for parents to connect and meet each other. We also had a local mom who's a photographer join us for the event and she took adorable pictures of all the kids for free for us. So it was a really wonderful opportunity. Then in November, we partnered with Pam Bartolini, Haley Knowles, and Meg McGovern to show and train parents on the new IEP form. In December, we planned a lovely holiday shopping event. Unfortunately, the weather did not cooperate because we live in New England and those things happen. But it would have been a lovely event. The three of us had a great time. It was great. And then in January, we offered all of our mandatory trainings, which we do for basic rights, understanding the IEP evaluations and transition planning. And these were all facilitated by the Federation for Children with Special Needs.
Thanks. In March, we held our third annual resource fair. This, we do this in partnership with the Mansfield CPAC as well. This is the first year we had it at, at our school. It went really well at the Ahern. We had over 45 vendors and well over 60 families attended. We had mental health professionals, after school programming, summer camp counseling services, government agencies, MassAbilities was there. We had soccer, top soccer and karate. So all the, a ton of different vendors and resources that are there to support our, our special education kids and frankly, our most vulnerable kids. The parents, the parents get so much out of this. So we have to figure out even better ways to get even more parents. We have opened it up to some other districts. We promoted it with Walpole and some other close districts as well. It's, it's, it's very valuable for the parents to have these resources right at their fingertips, to go home with pamphlets and all that stuff. But it's also incredible to watch all of the vendors and resources communicating with each other and then partnering with each other. That's really powerful. That's really, really powerful. So it is probably our crowning, our crowning achievement each year. And it just keeps getting better. In May, we were proud to support the Foxborough and Norton Special Olympics. And we had John's Dream Ice Cream come out. For those of you that don't know John's Dream Ice Cream, it is, John was a child within the Mansfield School District with epilepsy and his father started John's Dream Ice Cream with him and he passes out ice cream. Unfortunately, we lost John rather unexpectedly a month or two ago. But it's been incredible to see his dad still continuing on the legacy, passing out the ice cream, having best buddies there to support it, having special ed kids from, from Mansfield and I'm assuming eventually Foxborough to passing out ice cream. And it's, it's, it's very heartwarming to see what our community has done to support that. If you ever need an ice cream truck or an ice cream cart, John's Dream Ice Cream. By the way, he's already full and I'm already using him.
I was just going to say, I've tried to book him three times and he can never.
He doesn't advertise either.
It's fantastic.
But I've actually booked him for next Memorial Day for my son's graduation party because I'm trying to get it in before like, you know.
He books up.
Well, that and before the World Cup is coming.
Oh, yeah.
That's a big, big deal. So all the, on the other months that we didn't mention, we have our general meetings and we are open to the 400, 400 families. Actually, we have about 480 kids that make up our special education students within the Foxborough Schools. So we help, we hold general meetings and mainly to offer support, camaraderie, connection. These are vulnerable kids. These are stressed out and often tired and often nervous parents. So it was wonderful to hear about all of what the PTO and PACs are doing. We're in a slightly different situation. We don't have a lot of volunteers. These are parents that, that spend their waking moment researching things for their kids, getting their kids to therapies. We don't have a lot of special ed parents that have the time to support us. So one of the main reasons that we wanted to come today was to put a plea out there if there's anyone that is interested in up there, interested in, in helping out and providing some great resources to, you know, parents and caregivers that are really in need. We could really use your help.
Carrie, I'm going to ask a leading question right now. Excuse me. I'm going to interject. How many children do you have in the Foxborough Public School System right now?
I have zero.
She does this because she is passionate about CPAC and their mission. And I'm sorry to call you out.
That's okay.
But I need to because this is, this is all about volunteerism and it's important for people to know that that's how important the CPAC is to you, is that your kids have moved on, but you are still here doing the work.
I have a child still with needs, but, but we are at a place where I can breathe and I know a lot of other parents can't. Corey Michael, Corey Michaelasik, our director of Student Services has been incredibly supportive of us. Anytime we want to meet, anytime we need a check, sorry. But he's, they're not big. He's been incredibly supportive. Anytime we get an email out, Christine, you know, whatever, whatever we need. But we are looking for people. We have already started to plan for next year. We are having a planning meeting on Wednesday, July 30th, and we're having a play date for caregivers, parents, grandparents and the kids on Wednesday, August 20th at Payson, at the Payson Playground. So all are welcome. We'll organize the, the Hay Ride again in October. We've got some great things planned. Hopefully we'll get a survey out in early fall because we really want to make sure that our programming and our activities are what our parents need and want and can attend. So that's where we're at. Jo is a graduate of our special.
Alumni student, yeah.
Yeah. And he is an incredible sounding board for us. We actually ask him questions. What do you think? He comes to our meetings and like you folks over here, invaluable.
And then this year, I haven't been up top today with my, the meetings because I've had some other conflicts on Wednesday nights since it got moved to Wednesdays.
But.
I'm sure you're still available when they need you, right?
Yeah.
He shows up at our events.
Yep.
Sort of. He, he, when, when parents come on the call, he will talk with them. It's, it's amazing. It's helpful, really helpful.
Thank you. Jo, Jo's very helpful. He's very nice, very helpful.
And then even though they didn't need me to volunteer for Special Olympics last week, I still went to go support and watch everyone.
And you had a smile on your face the entire time. Sure. You were having a ball.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. I can't thank you guys enough. And CPAC, if anyone's interested, reach out. And how do they get in touch with CPAC?
Great. You can contact me directly. What is our email?
It's foxboroughcpac@gmail.com.
I believe Foxborough spelled out. Feel free to reach out to me. I, we don't have a website support. So whoever is ready to work on another website, we'd love to have the help. But you can also reach out to me. I'm Carrie Weston, Michelle Thaxton here.
Holly Mandela.
Get in touch with us. And we would love to hear from you.
Can reach out to Corey too.
And Corey as well. Yeah. Oh, yeah. We actually, Corey's doing a big plea with some parents, especially getting them at like the preschool level is great. Oh, yeah.
I love how you guys have set up like Zooms too, to make it easier for like lunch in the middle of the day or something. That's been really valuable as well. So it's, it's very much appreciated.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. It's nice to hear.
Thank you all so much. You guys are amazing. Thank you.
Thank you all.
What a great collaboration. We have wonderful educators. We have wonderful parents. And then we see the wonderful students at the teaching and learning. I think I'm very sentimental, all this full circle moment. We're going to go on to the superintendent update now.
Well, just to, to kind of start out with Special Olympics, like it was awesome. And continuing every year, see like when we have public safety out there, when we have all of the volunteers that are coming, partnering again and having Norton Public Schools come over and joining with us. And to see the, the smiles, talking about Jo's smile on his face, but everyone that you saw there smiles all around. So it was, it was a beautiful day. The weather was perfect and the event was perfect. And it really wouldn't have happened if it weren't for a number of the educators with, that spearheaded, Colleen Foley is one, and she had a team of people behind her that was really working hard to put it all together. But again, it really was the extraordinary efforts of many. So that was awesome. Last week, also had the opportunity to go to the STEM Day for sixth grade at the Ahern. And so many parents and community members to come out and share what they do within the STEM field was great. And with all of our students, high school students, middle school students, it really was impressive. I learned a number of things from the kids as well. Very engaging. So that was great. Our underclassmen awards is always fun to attend at the high school when you're able to see, now that the seniors are wrapping things up as we know, but to see the underclassmen from our freshmen on up. And then also to remember a lot of them when they were in elementary school and to see them, that part, talk about full circle. So really exciting. So lots last week, continuing lots of activities. Last night, we had the black and white dance, which was a great success. Dr. Donovan said, best one yet. They ended up not having any other groups on the Boston Crew. So that was great. I mean, had a wonderful experience preparing for graduation as we know that's on Sunday. So that's exciting. It really is the final stretch. We, we still have MCAS for biology for, at the high school and Wednesday and Thursday, but we have a lot of field trips, a lot of different move up, promotion ceremonies, everything. So parents, guardians, please check your calendars because there, there's a lot that's taking, a lot that's taking place. The scholarship night that we have for the high school, that's coming up tomorrow night. It, that's amazing when you think about the generosity from so many different scholarships that'll be awarded. The number will come out in the end, but it's extraordinary. And then class night on Thursday night, we had two of our teams just this afternoon. So we had some nice outcomes. I'll share that as far as softball. They're moving on as well as girls lacrosse, baseball as well. So still in the thick of it. And I think, I think that's it. So check your calendars. There's a lot going on.
I, I love that innovative calendar, digital calendar, right to the watch. That's genius, right? You need it this time of year. There's always something. Well, thank you so much. We're going to move on to our school committee, student representatives. Yasmin and Stevie are almost seniors.
So there is still time to preorder the graduate portraits. You can do that by June 8th. And then you can also order the bouquets for the graduating, anyone who you know, you want to get them flowers. We have bouquets that you can get at thecommencementgroup.com/foxboroughhighschool. It's all spelled out. And then, yeah.
So finals do start next week. So everyone's cramming and, you know, getting that final finals. And SATs this weekend too. So everything is all together. As you said, graduation on Sunday. Clubs and sports are finishing up and like with last meetings and games. Fall registration is open for fall sports. And we have nine school days left and 13 normal days. So we're literally a week away, basically.
All right. Thank you so much. Now we're going to go back to Dr. Burdells, Dr. Burrows and Ms. Sheridan. They're going to share the Plan for Success update.
All right. So we are at the end of this four year plan. And what I'd like to do is just kind of give a brief overview because so much that's been over the last four years are presentations that you've had here at school committee meetings. And you have the document in your packet. So we've just put together a slideshow here to kind of get the highlights and to look at the process that's taken place. So to kind of hearken back to four years ago, we used the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Plan for Success model. And that is a, a model that includes a multi-year plan, really looking across where are opportunities for growth, where are things that we have identified that are areas that we wanted to look for improvement as far as the opportunities of growth. And then really four years later, see where we, where we land. With that being said, so the plan itself is really, as you're familiar with, four pillars. And those four pillars are the work from that committee four years ago that identified based on all of the different opportunities for focus groups from data analysis, all that work. And that really was what rose to the top in these areas. Believe it or not, when you look at four pillars, it looks really simple there, but it wasn't a simple process to get to that point. And I, and I make that comment because we're already in that process, as I'll, we'll say at the end, for the next strategic plan. But out of those four buckets, if you will, those objectives are really our, our overarching goals. And those particular ones that you see there are really the what. And then when we look at the strategic initiatives that are underneath those, that is going to be, it's the how of how we've gotten there. And then the outcomes on the right hand side there are four years later, what are we measuring ourselves against? And what of our, what are our outcomes to those goals? And what does that look like? So every year, we have had a one-year action plan with the different strategic initiatives that are outlined within that particular year. We've presented those in the fall each year to school committee. And then at the end of the school year, then we report out on what those particular strategic initiatives have been for that year. And in order to get to that, we were really looking at the practices and the culture. And the practices in this case was an analysis through an equity lens to see where we are, where we need to go and what it's going to take in order to get there. When it came to teaching and learning, when it came to facilities and operations, when it comes to our overall culture and really supporting the whole child from a social, emotional learning standpoint, and then really a sense of belonging. So as we move forward, that first pillar, facilities and infrastructure, when we look at that one, that really is going to incorporate many different aspects from the physical plant to when we think about technology. So what you have there are those four overarching initiatives. And again, that's. And again, that's, that's the, uh, when we get to the how, the provide a safe, secure, supportive, responsive and innovative learning environment for all students. What does that look like? Well, four years later, what you see there is where we hope to end up and to be able to measure that progress and to see what we've done over the course of four years in order to get there. So this next slide that I'm going to show is going to be a lot of pictures, but it really is to highlight the last four years. So as you look at these pictures here, I'd like to take a moment to take us back to four years ago. And dare I say COVID? Because when we think back to the beginning of this plan, our focus was getting students and staff back in schools safely. It was a lot of distancing. It was a lot of masks. It was a lot of hand sanitizer and a lot of cleaning products. There were a lot. But, um, we did it and we don't ever want to do it again. And as we move forward from that place in time, in that first year, that was also our first submission for a statement of interest for the Taylor School. We were in the process of the Burl School and trying to finish that up and having the punch list at that point in time as we moved forward. In addition to those particular projects, we were really focusing on hardening access to our school facilities, whether it was rekeying doors, whether it was putting vestibules in, whether it was putting in school guard glass into those different areas. So a lot has taken place over the last four years when we look from a facilities and infrastructure, from the physical plant, but also from school safety, the partnership that we have with public safety, with partnering with Synergy 911 and having, um, critical incident training for staff, for looking at what we need to do from a mass communication rollout when it comes to technology, from school messenger and being able to have push notifications, to have safe arrival for schools. All of those things have taken place over the last four years and automating so much of the work that we've done and really looking differently of how we do that work. Taking all of the recommendations and having updated crisis plans with, uh, Synergy 911 as a partner, having, um, immediate, uh, communication with any 911 calls that come from, if it comes, we know within what classroom, within the building and where that comes from and having that instant communication that's there. Looking at, um, the laptop deployment and technology, that all falls within the facilities and infrastructure too. If we think back to COVID, that's when we went to a one-to-one environment. All that came along with that, all of the ESR funds, the, the COVID and ARPA funds that came with that, being able to do that, that was a huge lift. And then as we know, we've talked a lot about that through our, um, capital improvement planning, funding for the budget in order to continue to do that. This school year, having all of refresh with our educator laptops, looking at rolling in different grades with student laptops. So a lot that's there. Um, and then continuing to implement all of our safety measures, all of our, um, district trainings, FBI training for, um, schools in partnership. Then this year, um, a district-wide crisis team development, taking that information and then having reunification training, um, through the I Love You Guys Foundation. So all of the course of the four years, all that, you have that in, in your document that's there. But, um, it has been an extraordinary amount of work from a physical standpoint, from a technology standpoint. And we know that technology changes every day and that's going to continue. We're in the process of, uh, working with the Foxborough Police Department with a grant to continue to do other things that have to do with hardening, continuing to harden access to our buildings. So it's not anything that's ever going to be done, but a lot has been accomplished. And in this fourth year, really looking at, um, how we're implementing all of the recommendations. Again, that district-wide crisis team is new this year, the I Love You Guys training and continuing every year to have our training, um, with, uh, incident training for Synergy 911 through anyone that's a new staff that's hired. And then from a structure standpoint too, even this summer, we're going to see, as you know from recently, with our CIP, um, funding with the music lab at the, uh, middle school with refresh, with media center at the middle school and meeting about that. So lots within facilities and infrastructure. One area that we will continue, and as you're well aware, is the statement of interest for the Taylor School, fourth submission this year. So that's going to be one of the areas that we will continue to go into the next plan from that pillar. So I'll stop there. Anything on facilities and infrastructure, questions? Okay, we will move on to our second pillar.
So I'll speak a little bit to the second pillar. I know it looks like there's only two goals there, but I, I assure you those goals are pretty big. Uh, there's been a significant amount of work that has happened, uh, in this pillar over the course of the last few years. So of course the, uh, the strategic objective there is to provide opportunities for educators to collaborate and create common equitable learning experiences. Uh, we've spent a great deal of time over the course of the past few years through our participation in, uh, in, uh, the DESI MTSS academies, uh, through some of our internal work with inclusive practices, uh, and, uh, and also some of our work to align ourselves with the, uh, the NIASC accreditation process as well. Uh, so, uh, going back again to the beginning of the plan as Dr. Burdos had done, uh, if you recall, we've done, uh, a bit of restructuring of some of our special education programming. With that, coupled with that, uh, we, uh, initiated our participation in, uh, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has had these instructional improvement academies. We actually participated in two. I'll speak to the second one when we get to the wellbeing pillar. But the first one that we participated in was to focus on developing multi-tiered systems of support. And, uh, in supporting universal design for learning, uh, which, you know, means just that universally designing learning experience so, so that all students have access, uh, to grade level content. And then also, uh, it, it also focused on, uh, co-teaching practices. So there's been a great deal of work over the course of the past few years, uh, you know, building up our understanding of that. We have, uh, a couple of the authors of the inclusive practices playbook in the audience tonight. Uh, they did such a wonderful job, uh, supporting that work. Our literacy specialists and our math specialists initially, uh, in the 22, 23 school year, came together and said, you know, there's really, there's so much here and we really need to memorialize it, uh, and we need to help it make sense. Uh, so that DESI Academy was fantastic, access to a plethora of resources. Uh, and, uh, we started that work back a few years ago and came out with that playbook to really help all of our new hires, uh, and all of our existing staff really make sense of those and curate the resources that were really special to us. So, uh, there's been a, a great deal of work around that, uh, in this particular school year. We have focused specifically on the science of reading. Uh, we've, uh, we've focused, uh, quite a bit on standards-based report cards, uh, in grades five and grade six, but there's also been a great deal of work, uh, at the elementary level as well, uh, with regard to that, with, uh, you know, creating common rubrics and common expectations. If you recall, a few years ago, we've started, uh, the FastBridge literacy screener. Uh, that's been a part of this work and, and underneath, uh, this pillar to help us make sure, it's part of that MTSS process. Let's, uh, make sure that we have universal screeners so that we're screening kids, we're understanding which kids need support. And then we're leveraging our instructional model at the elementary level and at the middle school level is that workshop model. We're leveraging the workshop model to support in the moment differentiation for our kids to help all of our kids access, uh, that, that grade level content. Quite a bit of professional development underneath this pillar. That really focused on those things. We, uh, also, uh, at the beginning of this school year, launched a curriculum library. There's a, there is an image of what one of those curriculum documents look like. Uh, looks like a massive undertaking for our K-12 curriculum leadership team. Uh, and I am just, uh, so grateful to have such a strong team between our K-8 curriculum directors and our department eds. Uh, I cannot understate how much of an undertaking it was to get these all in a common format and get them published, uh, on the website. That really did dovetail with our vision of a graduate process and our NIASC accreditation process, which as you know, in speaking with Dr. Donovan and Dr. Wazaluski and Ms. Durico, uh, that was really a K-12 process. Uh, you know, and in, in another part of our work moving forward will be, uh, realizing what does that look like, uh, in the classroom and how are we measuring that? So we focused a bit on science of reading this year. We've expanded project lead the way opportunities. We're always, uh, always looking to expand that. We've expanded, uh, engineering pathways up at the high school and we're adding that biomedical pathway, uh, in this current school year as well. Uh, so, uh, so lots to do there, lots of continued work, uh, to do there. And, uh, really, you know, just two goals, but a lot, a lot of stuff.
You're never bored. I know that. You're always going.
I love it.
Yes, yes. And you always have a smile on your face.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, so, um, underneath the wellbeing, uh, pillar, a little bit more, but you'll notice some common themes. Uh, underneath this, uh, pillar, there's also been a significant emphasis on multi-tiered systems of support here. Uh, there are some screeners that we've added, uh, on the wellbeing side of things to support our students, uh, in, in providing those multi-tiered interventions for stu-, to build , uh, social, emotional skills, skills, excuse me, and, and competencies, uh, in, within that pillar. Uh, over the course of the past few years, we've actually, uh, participated in another DESI, uh, instructional academy. And that has been focused on, uh, MTSS as it relates to SEL and behavioral, uh, support. So we've received a significant amount of training for that as well. Uh, we've really, uh, continued our focus with professional development on trying to relate and integrate, uh, SEL core competencies into instruction. The Ahern Middle School, for example, has placed a significant emphasis on executive functioning skills this school year, uh, for, for those of you, uh, that have students, uh, at the Ahern. And, and that's really been a part of that. That's actually one of the key competencies underneath, uh, SEL. Also, across K-4 and 5 to 8, uh, there's been a significant amount of summer curriculum work. There's a, a visual example there for you of first grade where, uh, our staff have developed crosswalks. We've, uh, been very fortunate to have the Panorama SEL screener, the Second Step curriculum, uh, and also responsive classroom, which, which isn't featured up here. But, uh, there's been a concerted effort to try and create a crosswalk where that material is overlapping, uh, and teachers aren't, aren't overwhelmed by the amount of resources, uh, that we, uh, that we have at our fingertips here. And that's really helped, uh, build meaningful lessons at each grade level, uh, and help it feel authentic for our students because our teachers can kind of pick and choose what's appropriate for the students in front of me. Also within this pillar, we've added that, uh, community wellness coordinator. I know that Amy Muldowney has come in and spoken, uh, at school committee a number of times. She has been, uh, an incredible, uh, help to the district. Uh, there's been, uh, parent academies that have run over the course of the past few years. I know we did have one, uh, on executive functioning this year, but, uh, there's been a variety of topics that we've tackled in those parent academies. Uh, this year, uh, we hosted a screening of Screenagers, uh, that was very well attended. Uh, and, uh, that, um, uh, that was the, uh, the elementary version of Screenagers, correct?
Yes.
Uh, and a very well-attended event. And we even had some, uh, some great questions coming from our elementary students, actually at that event. So, uh, really great. We got the question of, uh, you know, how many hours is too many hours of cell phone use in a day? So, uh, that was, uh, you know, a, uh, the world will never know. Also this year, uh, again, significant emphasis on professional development. We even had a book study, uh, this year on improving every lesson with SEL. Uh, that is, um, that, uh, happened at the Ahern Middle School, uh, as well. Uh, and that focused on, um, building and integrating SEL competencies, uh, into lessons. Uh, we also have the Panorama screener, screener, if I hadn't already mentioned that. Uh, and, uh, yeah, yeah, just, uh, a lot, a lot of work. Lot of work.
Lot of stuff. Still smiling.
So as we move to the, the fourth and last pillar here, diversity, equity, inclusion, this is really a lot of work in having students feel as though they belong. And when we think about the unified sports, the increase in the number of opportunities, the Special Olympics that we've had, being named as a unified champion school district, we have a lot to celebrate there. It is just awesome. So we've had a lot there in that realm, but we've also focused on trying to diversify our staff and really looking at when we're posting for job positions, where are we posting? How are we trying? Because we know that what we hear from our students is that they want to have staff that look like them. And so looking at where we can, but school spring is an example of where we always post, but how can we use Indeed? How can we go out to job fairs and be really proactive of trying to recruit staff to come to Foxborough to be able to diversify? So whether it's handshake, whether it's Indeed, whether it's school spring, whether it's the job fairs that we're going to, or really trying to leverage our Metco coordinator with Chantel, what are some ways that we can bring more people to Foxborough? So that will continue to be a focus of ours because when you're in a suburban school district, it really is a challenge. But that is something that will continue to go forward. And I know that from the work that we're already doing on the next plan. That has come out loud and clear. Really being able to provide those opportunities where everyone feels like they belong and we're meeting their needs. That's where we saw this year between Pillar Three and Four with social, emotional learning, so much of a crossover. And to the point to where we brought our, um, two committees together to really look at targeted professional development that was timely, that brought, um, agency and choice for our educators and that they were able to really meet the needs of the students that were in front of them. And again, going back to that screener for Panorama, when we first started that four years ago, we had two times a year. We then moved from a fall, winter, spring. And taking that data, taking our mental health teams, taking our PLCs, looking at grade level cycle meetings, all of those, where are our students needing additional supports? When we looked at, um, interface, which being able to leverage a grant and bring that from the community and be able to have our resources with our guidance counselors, our mental health staff and with the community, so many intersections that were there. So as we look at this particular pillar, really providing all of those, uh, supports for students and for families, whether it's through the parent academies, there was really a cross-section that was here. A couple of pictures here, talking about the smiles from whether it's Special Olympics or whether it's from, um, just our unified sports expansion from basketball to bocce to track, all of those, something that we're really, really proud of. Um, and to be able to be recognized again as a, as a unified champion school district, not just the schools that were doing that. That was really quite the feather in our cap. Leveraging, um, some of the other things that we already do that you're familiar with, our culture and climate survey, going back and looking at the questions that are there. It is a very lengthy survey, but how can we change some of those questions to be able to get the information based on all of these things that we've been doing over the last four years to be able to help, um, see what kind of improvement we're making from a staff, from a student and from, um, our parent community. Uh, information there, again, that one we will be administering again, but it will be in the fall this time because of the survey that we did with this current strategic plan and where we're, um, moving. From a curriculum standpoint, uh, Dr. Burrows mentioned it a little bit, but, um, implementing a bias tool. So as we're looking, are we meeting all of the students, uh, in, in front of us, but from a curriculum standpoint too? We have a lot of regulations we have to follow from, uh, the curriculum standards and frameworks. But are we looking at the resources and materials that are in front of our students? I mean, it was, one of the parents had mentioned it too, like with students with disabilities, when we have people that, that don't look like us. Like, are we having all of those things front and center in our classrooms? So that's been a focus from a curriculum standpoint as well. And then I would be remiss if I didn't mention our newcomers from being, um, the emergency shelter that was in Foxborough in the last two years. Uh, we had 48 students that joined us two years ago. Um, we only have a very few amount of students now because they have had permanent housing and have moved out of Foxborough, but truly a gift in what they brought to the Foxborough schools. But at the same time, when I think about our educators and the professional development that took place here, when we had, um, really a split, 24 students at the elementary level and 24 at the secondary level that came with English not being their language, the extraordinary efforts of the educators and the staff that supported them and the building administrators, um, and then all of the work that we've done from the task force from Foxborough. Um, it was really a rewarding experience and, and the end, um, as the emergency shelters close and ours closes at the end of the month, but to be able to see those families have the experience they did and that they were afforded in the Foxborough public schools, we're quite proud of what we were able to offer those amazing students. And so I would just like to finish with where we are. Our team right now is a team of 20. We have six parents on the committee of this team of 20. We started back in the wintertime with conducting focus groups with students, with community members, with staff, taking that information and then administering surveys, getting those out to our students, to recent graduates, to faculty and staff, parents and community members. And then our committee of 20 has started meeting, and we've been meeting since March and will continue to meet through the summer as we develop this next plan. And the expectation goal is to be able to provide the new plan to you in the fall, but we still have a lot of work to do between now and then. And it's exciting work. And I think that one of the things that I'm most proud of is all of the work that's been done, but it wouldn't have been able to be done if it weren't for the amazing administrators, teachers, staff, and kids to do it. It's an exorbitant amount of work. The other piece, too, is that it has brought an alignment from when we think pre-K to 12, from all of those pillars that you see, as well as looking at the work that we've done, and it is truly a living document. It is not a plan that sits on the shelf. It is something that informs school improvement plans, and it shows what our vision for the district is, and that it is something that people are familiar with. So the work that we're continuing to do as we go forward, I expect that we're going to have an even better plan as we move forward. So a lot of work, and just congratulations to all the people who really brought it to fruition.
Thank you. That was amazing. Thank you so much. Just like everything, when we talk about it at this meeting, we might have 20 minutes on the agenda, but this represents countless hours, time, thoughtfulness, volunteers, staff, just everything. So thank you so much. It's a thoughtful plan, and it's a thoughtful process. Like everything you do, I always say you're very thoughtful, and you really do. It's very well-thought-out, so. Anyone have any questions or comments? I don't want to--
I do. I just have a quick question. Great job. For Pillar Four, has there been any consideration to actually have it be diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging? So sometimes there is, you know, kind of the initiative, DEI initiative, can also include a "B" at the end for belonging. I think that, you know, DEI or things maybe we can do as a school community, but that belonging is what people feel based on the initiatives that we're taking. So I just, I don't know if there's any consideration in adding that.
So I'm going to say, yes, but. So yes, because that is what everyone continues to really come back to. That's what it is.
Yep.
Being able to feel like, exactly, belonging. But we don't know at this point what our next pillars are going to be.
Okay, great, yep.
So we'll see how that really forms together, just as those last two, we've seen that intersection. So that's what's going to be interesting to see with the full committee and how that plays out and what those buckets are, whether it's four pillars, whether it's three, whether they continue to call them pillars, you know, it's yet to be seen.
Well, it's very interesting. I like that comment, and I second that. I like that, the belonging, too.
Yeah, I think it's-- I mean, you see those pictures, right? I think it's really-- The Unified Basketball, for example, I think doubled right this year. So that just, those kids going to school every day, they just are part of the school community. They're--
And that's truly been our focus, and it even overlaps with what we're doing in Pillar Two and Pillar Three with inclusive practices, inclusion classrooms, really ensuring that all kids are feeling like they're a part of our community and a part of the education experience in all of our classrooms. So that's what it's all about, belonging.
Exactly. Love that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think a big part of that was the SEL, what I was seeing in Pillar Three, as you were speaking with it, and it overlapped a Pillar Four because I know the SEL is a big focus at the elementary level, especially with the little ones and having two elementary-age kids there. I'm seeing a lot of progress with it, and that whole kids at that age sort of understanding their own feelings and how they may project that onto other people and things along that just goes right over into the, you know, the no place for hate and sort of acceptance for kids and everything else like that. So at least speaking for the Taylor, they're doing a great job with that explanation, that sort of leg of it. So I see what you're talking firsthand with the overlap.
And I think, too, the shift that we've seen, so it used to be that where there was a skills deficit approach, and it's not skills deficit, it's a skills asset approach, and really looking to see what are the assets and what can we bring to the table as far as to leverage those? And it connects to all of that.
And there's so much more to SEL, too, that you'll find in the Vision of the Graduate when you look at the ICAN statements that were developed for the Vision of a Graduate. A lot of those statements talk about self-reflection and goal-setting, and those are all skills that we've been building over time because that's a significant part of SEL. You know, understanding your feelings for sure, but also setting goals, reflecting on your progress. And we see that in everything that we do when we're building relationships at the elementary level, and then also even with standards-based report cards in fifth and sixth grade, we're teaching our kids to self-assess because it's an important skill for them to evaluate, where am I and what do I need to do next to get where I want to be next?
Decision-making, self-regulation, all of those things.
The Taylor uses "yet" being one of the most important words. You can't do something "yet," so that's, yeah.
Power of yet.
The power of yet. I love the power of yet.
I hear Mike Stanton's voice. Practice makes better. The power of yet.
As adults, though--
I know.
It's important for us as adults. I'm not there yet.
Yes. It's just funny because as Pat's talking, I can hear, because Mike Stanton--
Yeah, it's Mike Stanton saying that.
I go with that, and Mike stands over at the Taylor now. It's just, they do do a great job, honestly, all our buildings.
But hopefully, as you read through that report and you saw all of those things, that what stood out, maybe not so much, Pat, for you and Chelsea, because you're new to the table here, but it was familiar to you to say, oh, I remember hearing about that or that presentation or those kinds of things, because it's continuously, if we're doing our job, we're able to really educate those here through some of those presentations and having that alignment.
Yep.
Thank you all. It's been amazing. All right, we are-- Any further questions or comments or anything? All right, we're going to go on to our wonderful policy subcommittee. Nathan and Pat, you've got a couple of-- These are second reads, correct?
Yes. So the first policy, these are both from last meeting, is the homework policy, nothing's changed. Everyone was on the same page at the last meeting, so our recommendation would be to waive the reading, the second reading.
I make a motion to waive the second reading of Policy IKV. Homework? Second.
Any further questions, comments? All in favor?
All right.
And we'll waive the reading on that. Would anyone like to make a motion? I will entertain a motion to accept this policy.
I make a motion to approve, accept or approve Policy IKV. Homework? Second.
Any further questions, comments? All right. Seeing none, all in favor? And 5-0-0, thank you very much. Okay.
So the next policy is the infamous competency determination policy. We took all the feedback from the committee as well as worked with administration to draft up this second reading version of it, and since there's more than some minor changes, I suggest we read it again.
Read away.
All right. So File IKFA, competency determination. In addition to meeting the local graduation requirements articulated in school committee policy IKF, a student must meet the competency determination articulated in MGL Chapter 69, Section 1D, and in 603 CMR 30.00-30.230.05 in order to receive their high school diploma from Foxborough High School. According to the statute in the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, or DESI for short, the competency determination shall be based on the academic standards and curriculum frameworks for 10th graders in the areas of mathematics, science, and technology, history, and social science, foreign languages, and English, and shall represent a determination that a particular student has demonstrated mastery of a common core of skills, competencies, and knowledge in these areas by satisfactorily completing coursework and has been certified by the student's district as showing mastery of the skills, competencies, and knowledge contained in the state academic standards and curriculum frameworks in the areas measured by the Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System, MCAS. High school tests described in Section 1 administered in 2023 and in any additional areas determined by the board. A student who has previously earned a competency determination, or CD, through a regular or retest administration of the MCAS, including the November 2024 retest, or through a DESI appeal process, will be considered to have met the competency determination requirement. Beginning with the class of 2025, students can no longer earn their competency determination by meeting the minimum threshold set by DESI on the MCAS exam. Begin in January 2025, students will be able to earn their competency determination, which is required to earn a diploma in Massachusetts, by satisfactorily completing the following coursework at the college prep or honors. English Language Arts, or ELA, English IX and English X. Mathematics, Algebra I and Geometry. Science, Biology. And this was the addition here, US History, so US History 1 and 2, there's little asterisks there. That's begin with the class of 2027. That was the recent addition. In limited circumstances where a district is unable to document a student's prior coursework, a student may earn the competency determination by meeting the standard for a substitute equivalent certified by the district as having met the same academic standards. A student who did not graduate from Foxborough High School prior to 2025 because they did not meet the previous competency determination requirements will be able to be considered for the current requirements through a review of the student's transcript conducted by a team of school personnel led by the principal and assistant superintendent and including relevant department leadership. In the event that current requirements are met in addition to other local graduation requirements, the student will be eligible to receive a Foxborough High School diploma. Legal references, MGL Chapter 61, Section 1D, 603 CMR 30.00 through 30.05, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education competency determination.
Great job.
Good job.
We also added the brief section after the table, "In Limited Circumstances," which we discussed last meeting.
Very nice. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any question or discussion? Anything? All right.
You guys want me to read it again?
No.
I make a motion to accept the Policy IKFA competency determination. Second.
Any further questions, comments, discussion? All in favor? 5-0-0, thank you very much. Thank you for all your work on that, both of you, and thank you, Dr. Barrows.
Just to update the committee, so the next steps now that this policy is adopted is for Dr. Donovan and myself to put together communication. We'll be posting that on the school website between now and the end of the school year to detail out the process for those students mentioned in the policy beginning in the year 2003 to 2025, students that did not pass the MCAS and did not, as a result, receive their high school diploma. It's a small number of students that will be able to request having their transcript reviewed, and we'll go through that process to see if they meet the current policy, which would be meeting our competency determination and meeting our high school graduation requirements. So that would, so it would need to be those two things.
Thank you. All right. We are going to move along if there's no further updates from the committee. We're going to move along to the acceptance of donations. Looks like we have two donations here. And Sheridan, if you want to let us know the story.
First one we have is--
Sorry.
Is the Sam Burns Award of Excellence Memorial Scholarship. It's in the amount of $1,000, and it's an annual scholarship for the high school, and that's the first one. The second one is actually a grant for Project Lead the Way, and that is the high school Project Lead the Way. It's the second installment of the engineering grant. This is the second year at the high school, and that is in the amount of $12,000. And then the third is, there's three School Pulse Panel Loyalty Award debit cards, all three of them in the amount of $200 each. And Karen Frazier, the Ahern principal, completed surveys for the US Census Bureau, and that's how we got the three debit cards for $200 each. So those are the three.
What are those? Just wondering, what are the use--
You can use them for whatever.
Okay.
There's no restrictions on it. So she can use them for whatever she likes for the middle school.
Great. Thank you so much.
I'll make a motion to accept the Sam Burns Award of Excellence Memorial Scholarship in the amount of $1,000.
Second.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. 5-0-0, we accept that with gratitude.
I will make a motion to accept the Community Initiatives check in the amount of $12,000.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? And 5-0-0, again, we accept that with gratitude.
And I will make a motion to accept the three $200 each debit cards, School Pulse Panel Loyalty Awards.
Second.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion? All in favor? Again, 5-0-0, we accept that with gratitude. Thank you very much, and thank you, Karen, for your work on that. Okay, we're going to move on to School Committee Retreat and a discussion about School Committee Retreat dates and 2025 to 2026 meeting dates and times. We started this conversation a few meetings ago, and I think we had landed on Jamie Quattrini reaching out to the Massachusetts Association, excuse me, of school committees to see what their availability was. I believe the date that we have swirling around with availability is July 21st, so I wanted to put that out to everyone. That was the best date for our field representative who's going to come to our meeting and help us. I mean, it was hugely beneficial last year. They helped us with goal-setting and, you know, really set Brent and Nate off on a wonderful journey for a policy overhaul, which they killed, and continuing to do a great job on that. So any discussion on that? Any comments, questions?
What's the time for that? Is it five?
So usually, we have it from five, and usually we're there till about, like, eight.
The latest.
Yeah. I mean, we, yeah. We get out between seven and eight, the latest. Yeah.
It works for me.
Works for me.
Yep, I'm good.
Okay. Wow, that was easy. Thanks. So just for anyone watching, the School Committee Retreat will be held on July 21st. We will start it at 5:00 PM, and agenda to be TBD.
And where will that be held?
So that is held at the chapel, which is down by the, and the recreation complex. Traditionally, it's always been held there since I've been on the committee, so down at the recreation complex in the chapel on Mill Street.
Right.
Okay, now, meeting dates and times for 2025 and 2026. We have two new members, so, you know, we want to make sure this room is a coveted space, so we're doing our best to try to align everyone's schedules, everyone's dates, and just, you know, we have some new players. But one thing, I purposefully put times on here. One thing I wanted to put out there to the committee, we have new people here. What are thoughts on maybe starting meetings a little bit earlier? And let me just give you my why. We have often, you guys saw, we have students that come, we have faculty, we have teachers, you know, that come continuously and do presentations, and just if we're able to accommodate maybe an earlier start on our meetings in general-- an earlier start on our meetings in general, I think we're talking about Wednesdays, and I think it was the second and fourth Wednesday?
Yep.
That we're talking about, the Wednesday is second and fourth of the months, month. I don't have a list of dates or anything like that, but if we're able to start any early, I don't want to push, I'm putting it out there for discussion. So, you know, right now, we start at 6:30. I mean, would it 5:30 or, I know it's tight, so just please be honest, and we're looking for discussion.
Well, I'll go first. I hate to be the bearer of bad news. If we choose to do Wednesdays, that's like my worst day to move the meetings up, so if we were to, yes, I know, bearer of bad news, but if we do a different day, I'm open to moving the meeting up.
So you're stuck at 6:30?
If it's a Wednesday.
On Wednesdays. Okay.
I can do as early as 5:30.
Everyone else?
I, yeah, I mean, the earlier, it's a little more difficult for it, so, I mean.
So is 6:30 better for you?
Yeah, like, I could do, like, 6:00, but anything beyond 6:00, because I certainly understand what the kids.
We're not looking to push the envelope here. That's not what this is about. It was something I put out there. When I started, I believe the meetings started at 7:30, so, you know, we have been able.
So we've made progress.
We've been able to make progress. We're, you know, inch by inch. Okay, so we're set at 6:30 right now. Everyone's comfortable with that? Yes? Okay, we're going to, we'll have a proposed, at the, either at the next meeting or at the retreat, we will have a proposed calendar of meetings going into next school year. I believe we have meetings through the 17th of June right now.
Right now, last day of school is our last school committee meeting.
Yes, that's our last school committee meeting, and then we have the retreat July 21st. So we will get some proposed dates because it does revolve around a lot of other committee schedules. So thank you very much. Thank you for the discussion. Appreciate the honesty. Thank you. Thank you, all. Anyone have anything else they want to add on that? Any considerations?
Just for clarification, we're staying on Tuesdays, then? Or we going to Wednesdays?
We're going to Wednesdays.
We're going to Wednesdays, and they're at 6:30. Okay.
Right now.
What do we do for a month that has five Wednesdays? We get a three-week gap?
Yes.
Yes. Wow, you're going to be one of those. No, just kidding. No, no. There's some meetings, like, there's some months where we just have one meeting, some months we have two. It sort of depends on how it falls, and that's why we give the, why we do a year out as a committee, the proposed dates, and then we kind of go through and just, we kind of all sit there with our calendars and stuff. Traditionally, that's how we've kind of done it, where we do an open meeting, we just discuss it, these are the proposed dates for the following year, and then we vote in our calendar, and it's pretty, pretty set in stone. That's usually how it works. So, yeah, we'll do our best to come to the next meeting with that proposed date. Okay, those proposed dates for meeting. Thank you very much. One last thing, everyone's, well, for the two new committee members, this can be the first time you've heard Sarah Ladonny talk about MYA Rewards, the Massachusetts Independent Insurance Association. For years now, we've done, we've signed up to do MYA Rewards. It's something we do in conjunction with the town. We sign up to do webinars, we sign up to do in-person meetings, this all comes, we can earn a certain percentage off insurance. Every department has opportunities. Katie, St. Katie Lang, we love you, runs the whole program. She works for Town Hall, and she oversees the whole program and does a really fantastic job, and our goal is to max out. They changed the program last year. We used to have, like, a calendar year, it was like 10 months, to do all these different, hit all these different goals. It's a whole rubric, and last year, they changed it to first come, first served. There's only so many, so much money that can go around, and so we kind of had to hustle a little more, but we maxed out as a town, so very proud of that. But Chelsea and Pat, if you do get a chance, I can, or Jamie Quattrini maybe can connect you with Katie Lang if you haven't already been connected with Kathleen Lang at Town Hall. She can get you set up for signups. It's stuff you can do, you know, you can just watch a webinar and answer questions. There's different things, so, sorry for the two that have had to hear me talk about it all year. You two are new. It's a great way to, you know, budget, it's one of our main pillars and jobs, and it's a great way, for me, as someone who's participated for four years, I feel pretty proud that, you know, I can do this and find a way to save the town a little bit of money. So, there you go. I've said my spiel, and I'm done. We're done with MYA Rewards. Until next time, July 1st, the program opens. Community update, we'll start with Chelsea.
Founder's Day is Saturday. Hopefully, the rain holds off. Fingers crossed.
Yes. Thank you. Yes, fingers.
Just a reminder that the concerts on the commons will start on June 12th, and the first one will be the Foxborough High School Jazz Ensemble, and if you haven't heard them, they are amazing, so please take an opportunity to come out and see them.
Thank you. That's fantastic. Nathan?
Just a few updates from REC, the same as last meeting, but still a couple more days to sign up for their summer camp program. The fishing derby is Sunday. Again, fingers crossed the rain will hold off. We're not getting lucky with the weather. And then mother-son dodgeball tournament, so all the information's on their website. Check it out, there's a lot of good stuff going on.
Awesome. Oh, wait, will you be wearing the fish costume at the derby on Sunday?
I don't know, you'll have to find out.
Pat?
Got to go to Marilyn Rodman Performing Arts Center for a theater show last week, and I know my daughter loved it. The show was fantastic, and Marilyn Rodman Performing Arts Center does a lot of community things, so I know they're full, but it's still, honestly, it's a great deal, too, for the kids, and it's a good way to experience live theater while also not having to, you know, drop a mortgage payment.
Yeah, it sounds like, and it's nice and close, right uptown.
Super fortunate to have that in town.
Yeah.
Patronize the local establishments as well.
For sure, yeah. They do a lot for our schools, too. Dr. Burrows?
Nope, good.
Dr. Burrows?
Nothing.
Karen?
Nothing.
Nothing. Well, I have a couple things. Obviously, Founder's Day is this week, this weekend, so, you know, parade in the morning. I did read today that at 7:00 a.m., the Founder's Day Committee will announce, weather permitting, if they will still go ahead with the parade, so we're hoping that they'll be able to do that. Graduation events are rounding up. Right now, probably in the next five minutes, Frank Santos Jr. will be over at the high school hypnotizing students, senior students, so God only knows. They'll be having snacks, and they just finished their senior sunset on the field. Congratulations to all our teams that are still in playoffs, that's fantastic. Tomorrow, we have the cornhole tournament, so if anyone's watching, and they have a senior or know a senior, have them sign up. We're going to have food trucks at Payson, we're going to have ice cream trucks, we're going to have cash prizes. It's going to be awesome. Starting at 10:30, come on down. And Thursday, we have a scavenger hunt. It's not timed, so kids be really, seniors are going to be really slow and cautious, but they'll have a scavenger, a fun scavenger hunt. Again, lots of prizes, fun stuff, and then graduation on Sunday. What an experience Foxborough Public Schools has provided for my senior and for her class, so thank you to everyone that made that possible. So, that's it, that's all I have. Entertain, a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all.